I call the 3:00 PM session of the June 27, 2023, Meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors to order. I'd like to welcome all of our visitors, remind you that if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the Agenda item, matters presented by the public later in the meeting tonight that we will take up as Agenda item number 16. Again, welcome everyone, thank you for coming out and participating in your county government. Our first business item of consideration would be Agenda item number five, the Items of Consent. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, if there are no additions or corrections, I move that the Items of Consent be approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion. All in favor? It is four with two absent, Mr. Powell. Agenda item number six, Consideration of a Resolution in Support of the Virginia America 250 Commission. Mr. Wagner.
In 2020, the Virginia General Assembly created the Virginia American 250 Commission for the purpose of commemorating the 250th anniversary of Virginia's participation in the American Revolution. The Commission has requested that each locality form a committee to plan and coordinate events in support of this statewide celebration. Some time ago, I had a conversation with the city about both of our localities working together on this effort, and there will likely be grant funding available for local committees to support the effort. Mr. Jared Marlowe, President of the Colonel George Waller Chapter of the Sons of the American Revolution, has agreed to lead the joint chapters in planning and coordinating for this commemorative event. Events, plural. The tourism staff with the Marshall Henry County Economic Development Corporation will also assist with promoting and carrying out of the events. And Mr. Marlowe is here today to introduce himself and to accept the resolution to provide you with more information on the efforts of the local committee.
Mr. Dillard, I believe that you have a resolution for the board's consideration. If you would read that, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Resolution in support of the Virginia America 250 Commission. Whereas the Henry County Board of Supervisors is dedicated to the furtherance of economic development and tourism in Martinsville and Henry County, and whereas the Virginia America 250 Commission, VA 250, was created in 2020 by the General Assembly for the purpose of preparing for and commemorating the 250th anniversary of Virginia's participation in the American Independence, and whereas VA 250 has requested that each locality form a committee to aid in planning for the commemoration period, and whereas the County of Henry, in conjunction with the City of Martinsville, will form a joint local VA 250 committee, and whereas the committee will plan and coordinate programs occurring within the locality and communicate regularly with VA 250, and whereas the Board of Supervisors wishes to undertake this endeavor with VA 250 to promote and commemorate this important historic milestone, and whereas Jared Marlowe, President of the Colonel George Waller Chapter of the Sons of the American Revolution, will form and lead this committee to aid in planning for the commemoration period. Now therefore, it would be resolved on this 27th day of June 2023 that the Henry County Board of Supervisors hereby desires to support Virginia America 250 Commission and their efforts to commemorate the 250th anniversary of Virginia's participation in the American Independence. And this is signed by Jim Adams, Chairman of the Henry County Board of Supervisors, and I would like to make a motion that we accept this resolution.
Second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor? It is four with two absent, Mr. Powell. And Mr. Dillard, if you and Mr. Zier would present this on behalf of the board, we have with us Jared Marlowe. If you would come forward, please, to receive this.
Good afternoon. I just want to take a few minutes here to explain more about what this VA 250 Commission is. Our history here in Virginia is the history of America. It's complex, it's diverse, but it's also promising. It's a multicultural story that in the revolutionary era was Native American, European, African, and American, both patriot and loyalist. Focusing on revolutionary events that started in the early 1770s and continued through the British surrender at Yorktown, the Virginia Semi-Quintcentennial will celebrate this inclusive history that marked the origins of the revolutionary new nation. Virginia's Commission is unlike many other state's commissions, because many other state's commissions will stop after July 4, 2026. But our states will continue going through 2031 to also include the 250th anniversary of the British surrender at Yorktown. So what does this mean for Henry County? If history is any indicator, we will have increased economic impact in the tourism sector. The last three General Assembly historical initiatives have generated $1.5 billion of economic impact, generated large local and state tax revenue, engaged billions of people in events and programs, and created media impressions into billions. The General Assembly has set aside millions of dollars in grant money that localities can apply for to further promote historical preservation and education and help bring people to our area so we can showcase our rich history. We also have prime support of promotion of any local events and attractions through VA 250's website and social media. Our local committee will encompass both Martinsville and Henry County. It will be headed by myself and Sarah Hodges, current Director of Tourism and Talent Development for the Martinsville Henry County Economic Development Corporation. With my local history connections and Sarah's knowledge of tourism and economic development opportunities, we plan to be a great team. We also plan to bring other members onto our community in the very near future, both lovers of history and those who desire to see this area prosper, so we can plan and organize to have the largest impact possible. Boiled down to a very simple idea, this committee's main reason for existing is to promote the rich history of this area and show it off to the rest of the state and the country. We all have a passion for Martinsville and Henry County and a strong desire to see it succeed. By passing this resolution, we are now eligible to apply for state money to do work that will bring people to Henry County and leave them with lasting impressions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marlowe. Agenda item number seven, A Consideration of a Resolution honoring Sheriff Lane Perry. Mr. Wagner.
Sheriff Lane Perry is set to retire on July 1, 2023. Sheriff Perry has honorably served our community for over 30 years. He has served in many roles within the department, including correctional officer, patrol officer, investigator, vice officer, and captain. He has served as sheriff since November 2006. Staff has prepared a resolution to recognize his service to Henry County and his citizens for your consideration.
Mr. McCannan, I believe that you have a resolution for the board's consideration.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution of the Henry County Board of Supervisors. Whereas the health and safety of all our residents is important to the happiness, prosperity, and well-being of our families and communities, and whereas law enforcement officers serve as pillars of the community, upholding a democratic structure that shelters the helpless and renders justice to those who seek to harm them, and whereas the officers in our area are committed to the highest standard of professionalism and service to the public, and whereas one such officer, Sheriff Lane Perry, has served our community for more than 30 years and will be retiring on June 30, 2023, and whereas Sheriff Perry was originally hired to work in the jail, but has served in a variety of capacities from patrol to investigation to vice, and whereas Sheriff Perry assumed Henry County's top law enforcement position in 2006 and has served with the utmost character, representing the values of respect, honor, and duty, which are emblematic of the office. And whereas throughout his service to Henry County, Sheriff Perry has remained an advocate for his officers and has sought to enhance their careers by securing funds for new equipment and by facilitating new training opportunities. Whereas Sheriff Perry has balanced the need for a strong sense of justice in our community with the desire to reduce recidivism and successfully reintegrate inmates into society through his push for the new adult detention center and focus on education and drug abatement. Now therefore, be it resolved on the 27th day of June 2023 that the Henry County Board of Supervisors recognizes Sheriff Lane Perry for his exemplary service to the people of Henry County and congratulates him on his well-earned retirement. And this is signed Jim Adams, Chairman of the Henry County Board of Supervisors. Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt this resolution.
Second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor? It is four with two absent, Mr. Powell. Mr. McCannan, if you and Mr. Dillard would present this on behalf of the board?
Now, I do want to say thank you. I always get emotional. It's been 30 years, but we do take it personal how people live in this community. My wife, I said Saturday, I consider my old life success. I hope the Lord's blessed me. I've been blessed with a wonderful wife, doing outstanding daughters. This is our youngest, Rachel, and they've been right beside me, and I've been blessed with some awesome coworkers. Thank you.
Agenda item number eight, A Consideration of a Resolution in Support of Issuance of Bonds by the Town of Timberville, Virginia Economic Development Authority, referencing the Sunnyside Presbyterian Home, known locally as Kings Grant Retirement Community. Mr. Wagner.
Sunnyside Presbyterian Home, based in Harrisonburg, Virginia, owns and operates three life-threatening communities, Sunnyside, Kings Grant, and Summit Square. Sunnyside has requested the Economic Development Authority of Timberville, Virginia to issue revenue bonds up to $8 million for Sunnyside to finance and refinance projects related to Sunnyside and Kings Grant, which is located in Henry County. The public hearing of the Industrial Development Authority of Henry County was required for the request to move forward since the Henry County IDA played a role in the original financing process for Kings Grant. That public hearing was held on June 20, 2023, and afterward, the IDA approved a resolution in support of the refinancing. The resolution also requires the action of the Board of Supervisors. There is no financial implication or expectation of either the Henry County Board of Supervisors or the Industrial Development Authority as part of this refinancing, and the bonds will flow through the Timberville Authority. And many of you may recall that the board approved a very similar request in 2013. And we have with us Ms. Perrin from McGuire Woods Law Firm, representing Sunnyside. Should you have any specific questions relating to this request?
I think the board has had opportunity to review significant background material in regard to this as part of your board packet. What is the desire of the board in regard to this approving of a resolution?
Mr. Chairman, we have the board approve the resolution as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion. All in favor? It is four with two absent, Mr. Powell. Agenda item number nine, We'll Have a Monthly Report on Delinquent Tax Collection Efforts. We have with us County Treasurer Scott Grandstaff. Welcome, Mr. Grandstaff.
Thank you. Good afternoon. This is a report as end of May 31, 2023. Personal property collection, we collected 90.02% of the 22 personal property taxes. During the month, we collected $81,816. Real estate, as of May 31, we have collected 94.77% of the 22 real estate taxes. During the month, we collect $115,545. Since January 1, 2023, taxes collected $436,071. And so far, in the month of June, we have 17 DMV stops. And I think I mentioned last month, but on July 12, we'll have another judicial sale scheduled here in the boardroom.
Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Grandstaff at this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone here from EDC?
No.
Okay, we're going to skip Agenda item number 10.
No, it's 10. We need to do 10, that's Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, I apologize. I was looking at economic development. Agenda item number 10, We'll Have an Update from Martinsville Henry County Chamber of Commerce. We have with us two members representing the Chamber of Commerce and possibly a third, I'm not sure, but we have with us Brunel Thomas and Clay Campbell. Please, come and tell us a little bit about what's going on.
And Mr. Jay Dickens is also here. Mr. Jay Dickens with the last.
Okay, thank you.
To Chairman Adams, members of the Board of Supervisors, our county administrator and deputy county administrator, all who make up this assembly, good afternoon. My name is Brunel Thomas, and I am the president of the Martinsville Henry County Chamber of Commerce and executive director of the Chamber's Partnership for Economic Growth. I appreciate this opportunity to share with you on today's agenda, and I recognize the length of your agenda and being very sensitive to your time. You have to give me a heads up if I go too fast, so hold on and buckle up. I want to give you an idea as to what I've been doing in my first almost 90 days in the role. Since April 3, 2023, on day one, I attended my first of about 11 ribbon cuttings in our community. Four of those are represented on the slide that occurred in the Henry County area. Brandon has been adopted as one of the members of our extended family as he shows up in support, and we appreciate and invite any of you, as your calendars will allow, to come and help us welcome these new businesses to our community. At the top left, you see Made to Manifest in Ridgeway, Virginia. Top right is the Bridle and Dance Wear Shop in Fieldale, Virginia. The bottom left is Ian K. Caskets, located on AL Philpott. In the bottom right, Bobble Noel is located on Reeves Road. Startup and Grow continues to be one of those bright and shiny stars with the Chamber and CPED. Both classes ended in April and May of the spring. In the seven years of this program, we have had 322 graduates and received five, those recipients have received over $570,000 in in cash and in-kind support, which has created over 270 jobs. The Community Colleges of the Appalachia honored Patrick and Henry Community College with the Southeastern Workforce Development Award for its partnership with Startup and Grow Martinsville, Henry County. Here you see a couple pictures of those new businesses in Henry County. At the top left is SWAM, which will be located down in the Ridgeway area, and J&amp;H Market, located in the Preston community. And we were grateful that the calendar allowed Chairman Adams to be present to help with those presentations and those check awards. This is probably one of the best things, most fun things about this job, is presenting somebody else's money to someone else to help their dream come true, but it helps our community as well. So our startup recipients received a total of $20,000 this spring. In Grow, we had a total of in-kind and cash donations or awards for the spring class, totaling $66,000. And on this slide, you see our county administrator was present to help with those presentations. To the left is one of our recipients from Cozy Temptation, and on the right is La Grant Chiropractic Center, located on 220 South. Much of the funding that we awarded through our Grow to our Grow recipients this spring was possible not just from the CPED support, but also from the Tobacco Region Revitalization Commission. They matched dollar for dollar for any of the businesses that were in the target sectors of agribusiness, technology, small-scale production, manufacturing, and healthcare. We've been meeting and meeting and meeting and meeting, and I give you the long list of folks that I've met with, but that probably isn't as meaty as telling you about one of the things that we have done as a result of, and the response from those meetings was to have host a free social media workshop, and this was open to the whole community, Chamber membership as well as small businesses. We had about 20 attendees, and they represented businesses like Press Glass, Blue Ridge Regional Library, Southern Area Agency on Aging, Wigs Unlimited, Edwards Adult Day Center, and several of the Uptown businesses. The response was so great that we planned another free workshop on Thursday, June 29, at NCI. We also held our post-legislative session on May 23, and we had 30 or so participants that were on Zoom and in person. We heard updates from Delegate Adams and Delegate Marshall, who were in attendance virtually, and from the aides representing Delegate Williams and Congressman Griffith's offices. This gave us an opportunity to thank Delegate Marshall, as much as in person as virtual will allow, for his service to our community and of course, for the kudos that he offered, particularly to our county administrator for the work that he's done in partnership with his service. A list of a bunch, a bunch, a bunch of activities planned for the summer. I hope that you're able to make as many of these, again, as your calendar will permit. We have several activities, including Uptown Restaurant Week, starting July 9. Chamber Night with the Mustangs is on July 10. Business After Hours returns with the first event at NCI on July 27. And then, Mr. Campbell is going to host us, as well as the Dambly, Pennsylvania County Chamber of Commerce on August 10, on the Sky Deck, if I'm not mistaken. So you definitely want to put those dates on your calendar to come and network with the business community. You see other dates listed here. Thursday is the deadline, if you want to take advantage of the early bird registration for Oktoberfest, which is scheduled for October 7. Thank you, Mr. Dillard, for coming out and joining us for the Uptown Movie Night that we held on June 16. The next one is on July 28, and I'll get you a free hot dog. The Business Incubator, through conversations in the community, there's a lot of buzz and maybe even a few misperceptions about what's going on in the incubator, so I wanted to just give you a few facts about what is happening at the Business Incubator located uptown. We currently have 14 tenants in the West Peatmont Business Development Center. We're currently at 81% of our occupancy by square footage, 72% of our occupancy rate by suite, with 21 suites rented. We surveyed some of those business owners. We had 12 out of the 14 to respond to our survey to just gather some data points about who our tenants are. And it may not surprise you, but 23 of the 42 folks who are employed by a business located in the incubator reside in Henry County. That's 54% of those employees. Only three of those businesses located in the incubator are actually nonprofits, the Campbell Family Group, Foca, or CASA, and Southside Survival Response Center. Those are the three nonprofits that occupy the incubator. Six of the 29 rentable suites that we have in the incubator are occupied by those nonprofits, so that's only 21% of the rentable space. Other industries that are represented in the incubator include transportation, counseling, exporting, financial, medical, and advertising. And true to the myth, the majority of our tenants have been in their leasing space for over three years. Of the 14 tenants, only five of them have been in a lease agreement with us for three years or less, which causes me to question, what is the need of our small business community? Do they need true incubation? Or do they need a business development center that offers them affordable rental space so that they can move their business out of their spare bedroom, their garage, or maybe those folks who are trying to do their small business on another company's time? So where I'd like to spend the rest of my time is, what am I focusing on? Based on what I've heard, based on what my board has asked me to do, first of all, I want to tell you, I'm rebranding Brunel Thomas. Now, you may know me as that girl who worked at the college. I'm no longer that little girl that worked at the college. I'm still small and snappy, don't get me wrong, but I am now a part of the Chamber of Commerce. And I want you to know that in rebranding, I'm bringing those relationships with me, but I also want to help the community understand that my service may be similar, but it's going to be delivered in a different way. No longer am I serving students, of course, but my customer is going to be our business community and strong partners like local government and other organizations that are going to have similar goals as our Chamber has, and CPED. Our focus number two is also to continue to support small business. The momentum that has been established by Startup and Grow MHC over the seven-year history can't continue without continued funding to allow these businesses those grant awards. So of course, the challenge before me is to find additional funding opportunities and mentorship and coaching resources, and again, understanding the needs of our local entrepreneurs. Focus number three is to understand the needs and expectations of my Chamber membership. And that will be done as we try to figure out what the demands and challenges are in our local economy post-COVID. And as we rebound from COVID, our Chamber of Commerce may have to look a little different in order to meet those needs for our business community. I have to tell that our Chamber will be celebrating 65 years in this community next year, and that resilience is worth a big celebration that I hope will be delivered on a large scale. Focus number four is a huge budget, economic development, workforce development, and community revitalization. If I was in politics, I could put a period there and sit down, couldn't I? Because it encompasses everything that all of us are about who serve this community. But of course, joining you at the hip to create jobs, a tax base, focusing on our retail and commercial small business development. So my last slide, if this is appropriate, Mr. Chairman, if you have any questions of me, you have my contact information there.
A comprehensive and informative summary of what's been going on, and you did so enthusiastically, and we appreciate that.
I can only be me.
Agenda item number 11, Financial Matters. We have numerous financial items, taking up most of the alphabet, but we'll begin with 11A, An Additional Appropriation and Award of Contract Referencing Preliminary Engineering Report for the Dick and Willie Passage Phase 7. Mr. Wagner.
Staff is asking the board to appropriate grant and county funds totaling $80,000 to cover the cost of performing a preliminary engineering report for Phase 7 of the Dick and Willie Passage Trail. This report will study possible trail routes from the existing Virginia Avenue Trailhead up to the Philpott Lake, approximately 11 additional miles. The report will be used for planning purposes and future grant applications. In addition to the appropriation, staff asked the board to award a contract in the same amount to Hurt &amp; Profit Incorporated, located in Blacksburg, Virginia, to develop the report. Hurt &amp; Profit was selected for the project following a comprehensive request for proposal process.
Right. What is the action the board would desire to take in regard to this additional appropriation and awarding of contract?
I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation of $80,000 and award a contract to Hurt &amp; Profit Incorporated in the same amount to complete the preliminary engineering report for Phase 7 of the Dick and Willie Passage.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion. All in favor? It is four with two absent, Mr. Powell. 11B, An Award of Contract Referencing Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning Service 11B, an award of contract referencing heating, ventilation, and air conditioning service agreement. Mr. Wagner.
Staff asked the board to approve a contract in the amount of $57,516 to Train US Incorporated of Roanoke, Virginia for HVAC preventive maintenance services. This service agreement covers the HVAC systems located within the administration building, sheriff's office, public safety, the training academy, the courthouse, and the new adult detention center. Funding for this contract is included in the fiscal year 2024 operational budget. The contract has been approved as a sole-source vendor by the purchasing department, and we have an existing contract with Train for this service, but we're adding the adult detention center, which pushes the amount above the threshold of $50,000 to bring it to.
In regard to awarding of this contract, what action would the board like to take?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board to award the contract in the amount of $57,516 to Train US Incorporated for a service agreement on the HVAC systems at county facilities.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? There's four with two absent, Mr. Powell. 11C, award of contract referencing food for inmates for the sheriff's office. Mr. Wagner.
Sheriff Lane Perry is asking the board to award a contract to JL Coal Pepper and Company Incorporated of Danville, Virginia to supply food for the Henry County Adult Detention Center. The contract does not stipulate an exact expenditure amount because of the fluctuation in the number of inmates. However, the fiscal year 2024 budget has allocated $650,000 for this purpose. Staff feels that even though there is no set amount to be spent in the contract, it is a good practice for the board to award this contract because of the size of the potential expenditure. The pricing for this contract is based on the Henry County Schools contract with the same company.
What action would the board like to take in awarding of this contract?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to award the contract to JL Coal Pepper and Company to provide the food at the adult detention center.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? There's four with two absent, Mr. Powell. 11D, transfer appropriation referencing revenue shortages and expenditure overdues for the sheriff's office. Mr. Wagner.
Sheriff Perry is asking the board to approve a transfer appropriation of $594,180 to cover the budget shortfall in inmate housing revenue and to cover various budget expenditure overdues. As detailed on the transfer sheet that you have in your working papers, Sheriff Perry is utilizing funds from various cost centers within the sheriff's office to balance this budget.
Okay, in action to approve the additional appropriation, what is the desire of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the additional appropriation totaling $594,180 as requested.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? There's four with two absent, Mr. Powell. 11E, change order referencing communication system upgrades for the Public Safety Department. Mr. Wagner.
Public Safety Director Matt Tatum asked the board to amend the contract previously awarded to AVI Networks of Austin, Texas. The original contract was awarded in November of 2022 for $829,837, and it was to upgrade the microwave components of the existing emergency communication system used by the sheriff's office, public safety, and volunteer fire and rescue departments. Following a comprehensive evaluation of the project, both AVI Networks and staff identified changes needed from the original proposal. Those changes increased the county's cost of the project by $57,230 for the final price of $887,067. Funding for this project is included in the capital improvements.
I'll accept a motion for approval of this change order.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board to approve the change order in the amount of $57,230 to AVI Networks for improvements to the emergency communications systems microwave components.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? There's four with two absent, Mr. Powell. 11F, additional appropriation referencing asset forfeiture funds for the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. Mr. Wagner.
Commonwealth attorney Andrew Nezner is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of $2,382 from state asset forfeiture funds. He will use the funds to purchase two printers and software for use in his office.
In regards to this additional appropriation, what is the desire of the board?
I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation of $2,382 from the state asset forfeiture funds as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? There's four with two absent, Mr. Powell. 11G, an additional appropriation and award of contract referencing next-generation 911 implementation for the 911 center. Mr. Wagner.
Tiara Dillard, Director of the Marshall Henry County 911 Center, is asking the board to appropriate $56,458 received from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management 911 and Geo Spatial Services Bureau to complete the required call handling updates and security enhancements in preparation for next-generation 911 implementation. Director Dillard is also requesting the board to award a contract in the same amount to Mobile Communications America for the work mentioned. Purchasing Director Carol Jones has reviewed and approved this as a sole-source program.
What is the desire of the board in approving the additional appropriation and awarding of this contract?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board to approve the additional appropriation and award the contract of $56,457.67 to Mobile Communications America.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? There's four with two absent, Mr. Powell. 11H, award of contract referencing stream mitigation credits for the Commonwealth Crossing Business Center. Mr. Wagner.
Staff is asking the board to award a contract up to 3V of $162,150 to Clearwater Mitigation 4 LLC for the purchase of approximately 7,000 compensatory stream mitigation credits related to the development of Lot 2 at Commonwealth Crossing Business Center. The credits will be purchased in phases with the initial deposit of $158,000 due at contract signing. The total number of credits and final cost may vary as the project progresses. Pricing is based on a competitive bid and the number of solicitors there in your packet. This effort is part of the environmental requirements necessary for grading Lot 2 at Commonwealth Crossing, which will create a 150-acre industrial pad for recruitment of new industry. Tim Pace, our Director of Engineering and Mapping, is here. If you have any specific questions related to this part of the project.
This is similar to what we've had to do in the past.
Yes, that's correct. Anytime you disturb streams, you have to offset it in credits in other localities within the river basin, and this is a company that holds those credits.
Right. The board has background material on that. What action would you like to take in regard to approving of this contract?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the contract with Clearwater Mitigation 4 LLC for compensatory stream mitigation credits with the initial payment of $158,000 due at contract signing and future payments determined by actual credits purchased.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? There's four with two absent, Mr. Powell. 11I, additional appropriation referencing asset forfeiture funds for the sheriff's office. Mr. Wagner.
Sheriff Lane Perry is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of $78,068 from state asset forfeiture fund. The funds will be used for equipment, uniforms, training, and travel related to implementation of the school resource officers program.
In regard to this additional appropriation, what is the desire of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation of $78,068 from the state asset forfeiture funds.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? There's four with two absent, Mr. Powell. 11J, an additional appropriation and award of contract referencing Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services grant for the sheriff's office.
Sheriff Lane Perry is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of $361,000 received as a grant from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services. Sheriff Perry plans to use the grant funds, or at least his, the future sheriff, plans to use the grant funds to purchase equipment to help in the reduction of violent crimes, and this grant does not require a local match. In addition, Sheriff Perry is requesting the board to award contracts related to this grant of $223,500 to Flock Safety of Atlanta, Georgia, for portable and stationary cameras, and $85,561 to Town Police Supply of Collinsville, Virginia, to purchase nine Level 3 rated ballistic shields for patrol supervisors and the SWAT team.
With the information and background material provided, what is the desire of the board in regarding approving this additional appropriation and awarding of the contracts as detailed?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation of $361,000 from the DCJS grant and award the following contracts: $223,500 to Flock Safety of Atlanta, Georgia, for the sole-source purchase of portable and stationary cameras; $85,561.84 to Town Police Supply of Collinsville, Virginia, for the purchase of nine ballistic shields.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? There's four with two absent, Mr. Powell.
Mr. Adams, we have two additional financial items that I laid out.
Yes, sir, and I'll let you take, the board members have background material in front of you, and I'll let you take them in whichever order that you desire.
So the first one, as part of the Field Health School Apartments project, the county received a grant from the Harvest Foundation, $84,000 to provide incentive funds to the contractor renovating the school. Normally, we would have waited until next month to bring this to you, but from an accounting standpoint, it was best that the funds appropriated and spent during the current fiscal year. Thus, staff is coming to you today asking the board to appropriate the $84,000 in grant funds to authorize the disbursement of the same amount to JRS Realty for this purpose.
In regard to this additional appropriation, what is the desire of the board? And/or do you have any questions or need additional information?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board to approve the additional appropriation of $84,000 to JRS Realty.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? There's four with two absent, Mr. Powell. Mr. Wagner.
Just one note on that as well. We have also been approved for the future project at John Red Smith School as well, so you'll see similar action in the future of that.
All right, great.
The next item, as you know, the past couple of years, the county, like many private companies, has, we have experienced significant turnover of employees. Many employees retired and several left for better opportunities. But I am pleased to report that as of today, excluding the sheriff's office, we only have two vacancies in local government. So we went from about 71 a year ago to two today. However, we have a lot of new employees, and we also have many existing employees that have been promoted to leadership positions. The situation has increased our need for leadership training, particularly for our new managers, supervisors, and upcoming leaders. Our Human Resources Director, Michelle Vai, is working with Patrick and Henry Community College, provides a much-needed training onsite for our employees. And as you look through your packet, the board currently has $6,798 left in its 2023 contingency fund, which will expire on June 30 of this fiscal year. So I'm asking the board, if you're willing to appropriate these funds for the purpose of providing onsite training for new and upcoming leaders in our organization.
Okay, thank you for that background material. In regard to this additional appropriation, what is the desire of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board to approve the additional appropriation of $6,798 from the contingency fund for onsite training for managers.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? There's four with two absent, Mr. Powell. Thank you for all the background material, both of you, in regard to that. Agenda item number 12, we have a presentation referencing the Comprehensive Classification and Compensation Study for Human Resources. Mr. Wagner, will you give us some background on this, please?
At your September 2021 meeting, the board directed staff to develop a request for proposal to hire vendors to perform a compensation and benefit study to include all county employees and to invite the public school system to also participate in the study. In August of 2022, the board supervisors awarded a contract to Evergreen LLC to perform the comprehensive classification and study for Henry County, including the sheriff's office and the public schools. Since then, our human resources manager, Michelle Vai, and staff has worked closely with Evergreen Solutions to conduct the study. Kristen Gilli, Senior Consultant with Evergreen Solutions, is here today to present the initial results of the study. The information is being presented today, but staff is not asking the board to take any action on the study at this point. Staff will bring a recommendation for implementation back to you at a future meeting.
All right. Ms. Gilli, thank you for being here today.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me. Like Mr. Wagner said, my name is Kristen Gilli. I'm a senior consultant with Evergreen Solutions, and I am happy to be here presenting some of these results to you, some of our findings. It's been a joy to work with you all the past few months. So today, I want to go over our initial study goals, the various project phases, including the internal as well as external review, and then our recommendations. So the goals of our study were to review the current classification and compensation system to ensure internal equity, making sure that employees were being paid fairly. We also wanted to survey peer organizations to ensure external equity, so to make sure that your compensation was competitive with the market, and then at the end, to provide some recommendations to update the system that you currently have or to revise it to where it is equitable both internally and externally. So our study began in September of 2022. We had a project kickoff with the project team, both at the county level as well as the schools. We asked for some various data, so one of that being the employee database. We also asked for all of the salary schedules, the job descriptions of every single position within the county, the organizational charts, and then any personnel policies and procedures related to compensation. So once we were able to collect this data, we do what we call an assessment of current conditions. So what we found was that the county currently had five pay plans, and they were organized by grades. However, there was no formal plan for the sheriff's office. We also noticed in those plans that the county did have that the ranges were narrow. They were varying. So, for example, the range spreads for the PS admin pay plan was 39 to 42%. So when we think of range spreads, we think of earning potential. Best practice suggests consistent range spreads of between 50 and 70%. We also noticed in analyzing the employee data that there was some compression amongst employees, especially those new employees versus the tenured employees. The majority of employees' salaries were below the midpoint. Almost 82% of employees were earning below the midpoint of their pay grade. So we consider midpoint to be what market would be paying. So someone that has the qualifications, the experience, they are proficient in their position, they need limited supervision, they are able to just do the work and you don't have to worry about it, we would expect, you know, them to be somewhere around midpoint. So the 82% was a bit of a flag for us. This often suggests that employees are not progressing through the range as they probably should based on tenure or maybe experience. So those were some things that we wanted to make sure that we were able to help address in this study. So the next phase of our study was the employee outreach portion. Myself and one of my colleagues actually came up here back in December and conducted some outreach sessions. Before we did that, we did release a survey to all employees. We wanted to gain their input. If they weren't able to attend a focus group, we wanted to make sure that they had a way to give us some feedback regarding the current compensation and classification system, making sure that their needs are being met. So we released that survey in mid-November. We had 335 responses. And then, of course, like I said, we came onsite and conducted those interviews and focus groups beginning of December. It was a cross-section of employees. We made sure that are make sure that, or that we were able to speak with someone from every department. Uh, we tried to cover as many classifications as possible as well. So during these outreach sessions and in the survey, um, employees shared that, um, there, some of the reasons for coming to work with the county and remaining. Location was number one. Uh, most folks are from this area. They grew up here. They reside in, uh, Henry County. Uh, they also mentioned the job security and stability that, uh, the county provides, as well as the excellent benefits and retirement package. That was something that was said over and over, was how good the, the benefits are here. Uh, they also mentioned they enjoy their cowork, working with their coworkers, which isn't something we always hear. So that was, uh, nice to hear. And then training opportunities. They really appreciated the various training opportunities that the county does provide. Of course, we also asked about any concerns. Uh, we start with compensation concerns. Um, it was mentioned that there were some recruitment challenges due to the low pay. Um, that compression that we saw within that assessment of current conditions was also mentioned, specifically between the new and tenured employees. And then another, uh, compensation concern was the merit pay that is currently being, um, given. So it's the same right now for anyone who meets or exceeds expectations. So employees felt that there was really no incentive, uh, to go above and beyond in that regard. As far as classifications, uh, it was mentioned that some of them were very generic and they didn't accurately describe the position. Uh, same with the job descriptions. Uh, they didn't include all of the roles and responsibilities of the position. And then limited career progression with some classifications. Employees, you know, they want to stay here. They want to grow their career, so they would like, um, more, um, ways to do that. So after we, uh, finished, um, outreach, we immediately released what we call the job assessment tool. Now, the job assessment tool, this helps us gather information on every single classification, the various roles and responsibilities, the supervisory, um, responsibilities, the levels of complexity, decision-making authority, things like that. So, um, it, we, um, once we gather employee feedback, um, our supervisors also had a chance to go in and review, make sure that the information was accurate. So then we go in as, um, the consultants and we, essentially, we score each classification. We assign a numerical value, and it's based on those five factors, um, that you'll see, the leadership level, the working conditions, the level of complexity, the decision-making authority, and the relationship of the position in regard, um, in the organization as a whole. So, you know, once we review it, uh, we assign those scores, and this helps us create an initial hierarchy of classifications. So, um, you know, they're all the way from where we would, uh, possibly place, like the lowest level, all the way to the top. Um, now, once again, this is the initial. Um, so we also, once we gather all of that information, we, we, uh, determine that hierarchy, then we review it with the project team. So with that JAT, we kind of, uh, those job assessment tool, we kind of set it on the back burner for now. Um, and then we move into our next phase of the study, which is the market survey results. So, uh, like we mentioned earlier, this was done in conjunction with the schools. So you will see on the, um, your list, there are some varying, um, types of organizations, a lot of school districts, uh, school divisions. So there was twenty-one peers total that we solicited data from. Uh, we wanted to make sure that we included your, um, who your, who you're competing with were employees. You know, we wanted to make sure that we, we had a good representation of this area. So you're going to see some service, uh, water authorities, um, like I said, the schools, the counties, and the cities. We used ninety-seven classifications as benchmarks. Um, with that, we were able to collect five hundred and forty-one data points, and we finalized these results in February twenty-twenty-three. So on average, the county was found to be one point three percent above market minimum, five point six percent below market midpoint, and five point six percent below market maximum. Now, this is at the fiftieth percentile of the market. So if we, um, if, just to, for easy math, if you had ten peers, if we were at the fiftieth percentile, five of those peers would be lower, five would be higher. Um, so at the fiftieth percentile, uh, the county was five point six percent below market at the midpoint. Once again, we consider midpoint to be, uh, the most accurate or the closest, uh, to market that you can get. Your peers have varying, uh, range spreads. So some may have wider range spreads, and they have, uh, you know, narrow range spreads, which is going to affect your minimum and your maximum. So that midpoint is what we really want to focus on. So moving forward, knowing all this information, um, once we have the market survey results and we have that job assessment tool information, we combine that information and we run some regression analysis. Uh, so that's going to help us determine, you know, where folks should be on a pay plan. Um, when I say where they should be, where the position should fall on a pay plan. Uh, so moving forward, we wanted to base, uh, whatever plan we came up with on being competitive at the fiftieth percentile. Fiftieth percentile is very, 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 very common for public sector. Um, it's hard to compete with the private sector. We all know that, you know, they can have lots more money. Um, we also wanted to make sure that we were providing consistency and structure, especially, uh, with your range spreads and your midpoint progressions. Uh, we wanted to widen those ranges. Um, and then also consolidate some of your plans for ease of system management. So instead of now five plans plus a sheriff's plan, we're combining all of those five plans into one and just naming it general for now. That can be renamed. Um, so you have that plan and then you, another plan for sheriff's office. Um, typically, you'll see, um, sheriff's office plans on a separate scale just due to the varying, um, you know, there's sometimes changes that need to be, um, taken or done mid-year. Um, and also, it's, it's, it's oftentimes they need a lot more, um, space in between classifications. So, excuse me, I know this is very small on the screen, um, but there are thirty-one, um, in the plan that we did come up with, there are thirty-one pay grades. We did include a step plan with this. So there are thirty steps. You'll see here that there is a consistent range spread of fifty-five percent with a consistent grade progression of five percent. Um, so what that means is there's five percent from one grade to the next at the midpoint. Um, this step progression, there's one and a half percent in between each step. So ideally, uh, whenever someone comes in, if they're placed on step one, the next year they would play, be placed on step two. Um, so they would get a one and a half percent increase, um, with that. So this is for the general plan. So all of the employees, those five, um, pay plans that we combined. The next is for the sheriff's office, the sworn employees. So there are twenty grades on this. Once again, there are thirty steps, same fifty-five percent range spread, five percent, uh, grade progression, and one and a half percent in between each steps. So after we developed a pay plan, our next step was to, um, well, we slotted in the classifications, but then we needed to determine how are we going to transition employees onto this plan. So we have some various implementation options here. The first option is just to bring everyone to the new minimum and not do anything else. So this is just looking at the employee's current salary and determining, okay, does it fit? Um, you know, if we're saying that they should be in grade, that classification should be in grade one oh two, does their current salary fit in that range that one oh two has? If it doesn't, we move them up to the minimum. Um, if it already fits, all we do is we move them to the next closest step, um, because we know salaries are never gonna, never works out that way where they just automatically fall on a step. So we just move them to the next closest step. The next options are the parity options. So these options are all, um, they uses different, uh, years. So the first one is taking into account how long the employee has been in their current position. So it's looking at, um, their current position and determining, based on a thirty-year career trajectory, where in that salary range should that employee fall? Okay? And then it's, once it determines that salary, then it's going to move them to the next closest step. So the easiest way to explain this is say, um, you have, uh, a salary range of thirty thousand to sixty thousand. So there's thirty thousand dollars in between that minimum to maximum, right? If we divide that out over a thirty-year, that would be about a thousand dollars per year. Okay? So using the class year parity, if someone has five years of experience, we would take that five, multiply it by that one thousand, so that's five thousand dollars, and you, then you would add it to the minimum. Okay? So that would be thirty-five thousand dollars. Well, if there, is there a step that's exactly thirty-five thousand dollars? Probably not. That would, that would be too lucky, right? So then we're going to move them to the next closest step. Okay? Higher year parity is the same calculation. However, instead of looking at how long they've been in their current position, we're going to look at how long they have been with the county overall. Okay? So once again, if it's ten years, we're going to take that ten, multiply it by whatever that difference is, um, for every year that they would, um, get, and then add it to the minimum. Once again, then move it to the next closest step. Hybrid year parity, um, is where we combine class year and higher year. So there's a little bit of extra math involved here. So we first are giving credit to employees for all of the years they have spent in their current classification, and then fifty percent credit for all of the years they've spent in any other classification within the county. So if they've been with the county ten years overall, but they've only been in their current classification five years, they're first going to get credit for that five years they've been in their current position, and then an additional two and a half years for any other classification. So five divided by two is two and a half, I think. Just kidding. Um, and then use that same calculation to determine where they should fall. So these all obviously have pros and cons. Uh, bring to new minimum is always going to be your least expensive option. Um, it ensures that all employees are on the new pay plan, on a step, you're good, you can move forward. However, it does not address compression at all, and in fact, it creates more compression. Um, we, uh, typically, if we ever recommend a bring to new minimum, it's going to be in conjunction with something else, because, one, you, uh, all are experiencing a lot of compression and we don't want to add to that. Okay? The next options are all going to address compression. Okay? So class year is obviously going to credit employees for their time in their current position. It's going to address the compression based on that time, and it's going to adjust the market for, based on the number of years that they've been in that classification. However, if they have had any, um, merit increases over the fact, it could potentially erase that, um, just due to the fact that, you know, maybe, um, maybe someone that didn't exactly have the same performance gains would maybe be placed on the same, um, step as they would. Um, it doesn't account for any organizational tenure or any outside experience. Um, higher year, same thing, except it's addressing, it's crediting by, based on that organizational tenure. Um, it's addressing compression that way, as well as adjusting for market based on those number of years. Once again, it can also erase performance gains. It doesn't account for time in the classification, and it doesn't account for outside experience. Hybrid year parity is crediting for both time in the classification and the organization. So it is giving employees some credit, um, for their loyalty to the county. It's addressing that compression based on that time in classification and organizational tenure and adjusting for market based on those years. Um, once again, it can erase performance gains, but you are taking into account their classification time, their, uh, organizational tenure. It's just not taking into account their outside experience. Those are things that would have, um, potentially been taken into account, um, whenever someone was hired. So all of these options come with a cost, obviously. Um, I will say, uh, bring to new minimum is included in every single option. Okay? So that is the first, first thing that we do whenever we're looking at, um, any type of implementation, transitioning employees over, is we're automatically bringing them to the new minimum. So whenever you see the class year number of one point, um, two million, that includes that three hundred thousand that is bring to new minimum as well. So, um, you'll also see some capped options on here, uh, for the hybrid year. Those are used as a cost control method. Uh, these caps are going to ensure that employees aren't receiving more than a specified amount unless, of course, we have to bring them to the new minimum. Um, the cost estimates are also based on the employee's salary, salaries after the five percent adjustment that they're receiving on July's one. Um, and of course, these cost estimates do not include benefits. So as far as our recommendation, uh, we would recommend going with the hybrid year parity with a ten percent cap. So this is going to help alleviate some of that compression between employees while providing credit for all, all of their time in their current position, as well as some of, um, credit for, um, their loyalty to the organization. It is more affordable than some of the other parity options as well. If we go back, we can see that it's, uh, one point, uh, one-two, whereas some of the others, um, I think the next closest, well, other than the hybrid year capped at five percent. Um, I wouldn't recommend that one only because it's not going to help your compression as much. So moving forward, um, we have some additional recommendations. Uh, this screen I like to, I refer to as the we do. The Evergreen does most of the work on this screen. So revise the titles of the generic classifications to better reflect job duties and create additional classifications for career progression where needed. So that is built into the plan that we are proposing. Uh, revise all job descriptions to include this updated classification information provided in the job assessment tool. Um, that is our next step, one of our next steps after we, um, leave here today. My team is working on, um, that process right now. And then, uh, we do recommend that job descriptions be reviewed annually for accuracy. So that is one thing the county will have to do. Um, and then, of course, we recommend that you implement those two new pay plans, uh, one for general employees and one for all of your sworn sheriff's office employees. And we've already slotted the classifications into the plan based on internal and external equity, and we've already provided, um, ways to transition employees over to that new plan. And that's what we just talked about with the bring to new minimum, class year parity, and hybrid year. So this, uh, this screen is going to be the you do. So we recommend that you all conduct some small-scale salary surveys as needed to assess the market. Um, so if you have positions that you're having a high rate of turnover, a hard time recruiting for, so on and so forth, go out to your peers, look and see what they're paying, um, determine, you know, is, are we, are we, is our salary too low? Is our starting salary, do we need to adjust that some? We do recommend that you conduct a comprehensive classification and compensation study like this one every three to five years. Obviously, that's going to be subject to budget constraints and, um, if the market conditions, um, change, like they have in the past. And then we also recommend that you review and revise, uh, your existing pay plan, um, guidelines, including those for determining salaries for new hires, um, progressing employees through the plan, and determining pay increases for employees who have been promoted into a different classification. You just want to make sure that you're being equitable with all of those things. So our next step moving forward is to finish updating the job descriptions for you all. And then we will also provide some plan management training to your human resources, um, director. So, um, you know, before you, uh, you guys need to do this again, um, you'll be able to do some of those, um, things in-house. Okay? Any questions?
I have a couple. Um, in comparison to peer groups, uh, which would be other counties, other localities, was a blended, um, comparison made, in other words, salary and benefits? Uh, in other words, you may have another locality that doesn't pay full insurance versus the county.
No, benefits weren't included in, um, in our market survey. So it was just, um, just the salary ranges.
Just salary, okay? And of course, one of the things in the recommendation said that it would erase performance gains, but that performance could come in a form of a promotion as well. Is that correct?
Uh, I was more so speaking to the merit increases that are provided. So for example, if you have an employee who, um, received a, 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 a performance, a merit increase maybe last year, and then you have another one that didn't, it's possible that they would be placed on the same step.
And I guess for the effectiveness of this study, what kind of timeframes would something like this be implemented so that, you know, you don't wait too long and then this information becomes outdated?
Right. So I think we were looking at Jan, January?
It is based on twenty-twenty-four fiscal year salary data. Uh, we adjusted the tables based on the five percent increase on July first, twenty-twenty-three. And, um, so by all means, it needs to be implemented in twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four budget year.
And Mr. Campbell, can we get a couple more NASCAR races here to bring some funds in so we can, uh, take care of this thing here?
And that's a good point. We did adjust the, uh, pay plans already to account for that, um, that gap before implementation. So it was adjusted by another five percent.
Since we do not have, uh, two of our board members, uh, present today, uh, I take that this information will be available for us to share with them, uh, in some form or fashion.
Absolutely.
And, uh, along that same line, I'd like to offer, uh, Director of, uh, Human Resources, Michelle, do you have anything to add to this as far as?
Um, you know, not really. I think it's been a pretty thorough study. Um, Kristen's been great to work with. Um, we, we knew that we had some of these issues going into this with the compression primarily being the biggest issue. Um, so we really feel strongly that we need to implement some form of this study for, for our employees there, well-deserved of it.
Thank you. Mr. Wagner, would you like to summarize in any form or fashion?
Yes, uh, and like Michelle said, I don't think it was any surprise what the data revealed to us. Uh, we, oh, many of us worked here a long time, but we had a lot of compression issues within our employee ranks. Um, I mentioned it in our managers meeting this morning over the next two months, Michelle and I plan to meet with, we Michelle and I plan to meet with each department manager to go through the very specifics of each department. And just very simple things, like some of the job description titles changed to make sure that we communicate that information to our employees very thoroughly so there's no apprehension about, oh my gosh, my title changed and my job's going to change a lot. You know, that's like one example. So we're going to do that on a department-level basis. So we give the managers plenty of opportunity to ask questions and interact with the study itself and then communicate that back to their employees. You may remember in a budget narrative that staff's recommendation for implementing this will be dependent on our final results of the payoff of the loan and the bonds issuance for the adult detention center and any arbitrage callbacks related to that. So once we have that number finalized, then we can come back with you as a recommendation of when and how to recommend to implement this one.
Other questions or comments from the board? Ms. Gilli, thank you so much, and we wish you better traveling races going back than you receive coming here.
Me too. Me too. I should have been here at nine-thirty this morning.
Everyone that says it's fun to fly has never flown paralegal.
It is nice. Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to Agenda Item thirteen, informational items. I'll begin with taking any comments from the board. Mr. Zaire?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Diller?
Yes, sir. Just a couple of comments and want to thank Dale and JR and Brandon. Met with some young folk and just want to, you know, I'm using the term youth engagement. And some of the things that they mentioned was that they would just like to have a safe space. If they could get a restaurant to open up or a facility, just somewhere where they could go and sit and talk and socialize. They also talked about more indoor activities. We have a lot of outdoor activities, but a lot of the youth talked about being able to get indoors. And just encourage all of us just to look at ways that we can create more youth-centered opportunities within our community, because we talked about the positives and negatives. And, you know, they talked a lot about if they don't have something to do, they're going to find something to do. And we know that we have some issues within our community. And so we really want to, you know, really focus on that. And then, just one other thing, is we went through all the different bids and everything. Just wondering, are there ways that we can give our local businesses better opportunities to, you know, I'll say, win these bids or have opportunities to be the companies that we select? I know there are guidelines and rules, but if there are better opportunities for that, that would be great. Because, you know, I wrote down Blacksburg and Danville and Roanoke and Austin, Texas, and, you know, all that money's leaving. And I know some of those we don't offer here, but when we have the opportunities, if that's possible, that would be great. Because of course, then that money stays here and then we can pay all these folk that we're underpaying better. So, you know, just something that came up as we went through all of that financial stuff.
Right, Ms. Buchanan?
No, sir.
I'd like to publicly thank the Public Safety Department for the Fire and Rescue Appreciation Day and those that were able to attend that. I was traveling at the time from a family vacation. But Mr. Tatum, would you like to offer any comments in regard to that day?
Thank you, Chairman Adams. And it was an awesome day. We prayed the weather appropriately. After a wet week, Saturday was beautiful. We had about two hundred of our dedicated volunteers to attend to a picnic-style type event. We recognized numerous individuals for outstanding awards that were nominated by their peers and determined to be the winners and nominated, I mean, identified many people for years of service and will grasp the number. We probably had about, somewhere between six or ten people actually in attendance that we recognized for dedicating fifty years of service as volunteers to our community. So it was a great day. Thank you for the board for allowing us to do that for them. I think the volunteers appreciated it and it was a fun event just to socialize and fellowship with each other. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have. Mr. Wagner?
Just a simple reminder that all the county and PSA offices will be closed on Tuesday and observance of the Independence Day holiday. Our convenience centers for recycling and garbage disposal will be open later.
Mr. Adams, I'm sorry?
Yes.
Hopefully, not out of order, but I did want to congratulate Sheriff Wayne Davis. I see he's here and didn't know if he would be here for the later session, but did want to congratulate him and looking forward to working with him and all the great things that he and his team will do for Henry County from the Sheriff's Department.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Wang?
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. With that, that takes us to Agenda Item number fourteen. If someone will cite the items allowed by the Code of Agenda to allow us to go into closed meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the board convene in closed meeting as permitted under the following sections of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, two point two, thirty-seven, eleven, eight, one, for discussion of appointees to the Blue Ridge Regional Library Board, Community Policy and Management Team, and Roanoke River Basin Association, two point two, thirty-seven, eleven, eight, seven, for discussion of pending legal matters, two point two, thirty-seven, eleven, eight, three, for discussion of acquisition disposal of real estate, two point two, thirty-seven, eleven, eight, five, for discussion of as-yet unannounced industries, two point two, thirty-seven, eleven, eight, twenty-nine, for discussion of award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds.
Second.
Motion. And a second. All in favor? There's four. Two absent. Mr. Powell, I will see you all upstairs in five minutes. Came out of closed meeting on motion by Ms. Buchanan, second by Mr. Zaire. Mr. Powell, will you poll the board, please?
For the best of your knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and code within section two dot, two dot two dash thirty-seven, eleven, were heard discussed or considered in closed meeting. How do you vote? Mr. Adams?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Diller?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wagner, do you have any items for the board to consider before our very brief recess prior to our six P M. meeting? Board members, do you have anything that we need to consider prior to that? We're standing in a brief recess lasting eight minutes or less. I'll call the six P M. session of the June twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors back to order from our brief recess. Welcome all of our visitors. Remind you, if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings. However, the public may address the board tonight under the Agenda Item Matters Presented by the Public that we will take up shortly. We do not have a representation of VDOT tonight, so we'll move on to that item, Matters Presented by the Public. Is there anyone wishing to address the board on the Matters Presented by the Public? Seeing no one other than our reporter here that can contest that.
I got Charles. Wayne, you got anything to say?
All right. With that, that takes us to Agenda Item seventeen. If I could get a motion?
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn. All in favor?